Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council in regular session for Monday, June 5th, 2017, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Freeman?
Here.
Counselor Ryan?
Here.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Parsons?
Here.
Counselor Herrera?
Here.
And Counselor Anderson?
Here.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda would be special orders of business. We don't have anything under that tonight. Committee reports, there's nobody reporting from our city committees, and then we will give our reports at the end of the agenda. That takes us to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda for scheduled for public hearing. We do have one, two, three, four, five, six public hearings tonight. So if you're here for one of those, hang tight, we'll get to you very shortly. If not, we would love to hear from you. Is there anybody who wanted to address counsel tonight during public testimony? Don't all rush at once. All right. Then we will move on to the next agenda item. However, I would like to, before we start the public hearings, with the concurrence of counsel, I would like to take item 8A out of order, which is a report on the consortium cooperation agreement and intergovernmental agreement and the 2015-2019 consolidation plan and the 2017-2018 annual action plan. This is for the City of Salem and Kaiser's Our Home Consortium Agreement. Any objection to taking that now instead of after? Counselor Ryan?
Just a question. Would it make more sense to take item 7A so he doesn't have to sit through that?
What I'd like to do is do the public hearings all at once. This will only be a few minutes of presentation and then discussion on this, and then we'll be able to go into the public hearings. Okay, are we good? All right, then, we'll go skip ahead to item 8A, which I just read off, and we have a presentation courtesy of Kristin Rutherford from the City of Salem. And welcome, we're so glad to have you here tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. Thank you very much for having me this evening, and also thank you for reordering your agenda. I really appreciate that. It's nice not to have another late night meeting, so thank you. I'm Kristin Rutherford. I'm the Urban Development Director for the City of Salem, and I am here to talk about the renewal of our Home Consortium Agreement. So the City of Salem is an entitlement city, and we are in a consortium agreement with the City of Kaiser. This allows more federal funds to flow directly to the Salem-Kaiser area, where if we did not have the consortium agreement, Salem would receive a reduced allocation, and the balance of those funds that would be considered sort of the Kaiser portion would go to the state, and then Kaiser would go through the state process to receive any federal entitlement funding. So renewing this agreement every three years continues to have the larger amount of funding flow to this region. So these funds are distributed annually through a grant process that we kick off in the November timeframe. The grants are reviewed and then approved every year in the January, February timeframe, and then those go to the City Council in Salem for adoption in the April timeframe, and then that all goes along with our annual report to HUD. This year, because of some issues in Washington and HUD timelines, we'll be a little bit later. Normally, we'd be turning that in right about now. We'll be turning this in in the August timeframe, and then funding should be available for grant recipients in the September timeframe this year. So the annual action plan is an implementation of our consolidated plan, or the five-year consolidated plan. We're working right now off of our 2015-2019 consolidated plan. And as we develop the consolidated plan, staff does a great deal of public outreach through meetings, public notices, neighborhood association meetings, service delivery providers to get input on the priorities within that consolidated plan. So we are nearing the end of the 2019 consolidated plan, and this fall, we will be starting an update to that plan for the next five years and starting that outreach process again. So this likely won't be the last time that you see me or somebody from my department here this year. We will be undertaking that outreach and reaching to Kaiser service providers and to the council and interest groups, likely starting this fall.
Brooke, a question on the outreach. Do you also engage now more social media types of outlets?
We do. Yes, we do. And through the city, we've just launched a new website, and that's turning out to be a really useful tool for that outreach and engagement. That and Facebook. We're doing a lot through Facebook.
Can you send us those links so we will be able to get those, or have Nate get us those links?
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned before, the annual action plan is an implementation of the goals that are identified in the 2015-2019 consolidated plan. When we develop the annual action plan, the community, there is community outreach that occurs. It is not as significant as what we do when we're developing the five-year consolidated plan. But we do outreach to service providers and various interest groups as we go through that process. Annual action plan outreach this year consisted of contact with a variety of social service organizations, attendance at an array of community meetings, we publish notices, website publication, and notice on the city's Facebook page. There was a 30-day comment period on our annual action plan that ended April 14th, 2017. So every year, the city solicits applications for funding that aligns with the goals of the 2015-19 consolidated plan. Then each application is reviewed for eligibility and for alignment with these goals. And then that is all submitted to HUD for review. The funding recommendations are incorporated into the annual action plan and presented to our city council at a public hearing, which occurred late April. And then the Community Services and Housing Commission in Salem reviews each of these applications as they come in, for alignment with consolidated plan goals, project or program, financial viability, collaboration with other organizations, and community need. So these are the goals that are articulated in the five-year consolidated plan. I would anticipate, as we go through the same process, starting this fall, that we will see some shift in the priorities. Promoting economic development is currently the number-one goal in the current five-year consolidated plan. I suspect that based on input through this next cycle, that we will see ending homelessness rise to the top, and then providing affordable housing, because we've definitely seen an increased need. And in fact, a lot of the grant applicants that we've seen over the last couple of years have really focused on these two areas. The amounts available to award include federal entitlement funds and program income and project cost savings from prior-year projects. The annual application cycle for these grants begins in November, where we advertise notice in the Statesman Journal and Minority Publications. We issue a press release, and we post it on the city's website, and we provide informational notices at various organizational meetings, such as the Emergency Housing Network. During each application cycle, there's a cutoff date in time that's established. Occasionally, we get submissions that come in after that time, and it's always hard to say no to folks that are a little late in getting that submitted. And then we start that review process. So this is the funding that is in the current allocation, that we were able to distribute to grant applicants in this current cycle. And we do have notice from HUD that we should be receiving this full allocation. There was a period of time where we were a bit uncertain how much we would be receiving this fiscal year. The latest information that we have is that we will be receiving the fully, full allocation for what we have anticipated. Next year is a little less certain. So the funds that are available to award during these grant cycles are often oversubscribed, meaning that we don't have enough funds to award every applicant or to provide each applicant with their full funding request. The projects to be funded this year from Community Development Block Grant or CDBG funds include $74,000, I'm going to round these up, $74,000 to West Care to complete roof repairs at a transitional housing facility, $613,000 to the Salem Housing Authority for the conversion of Yaquinta Hall to affordable housing, $104,000 to Merit under the Economic Development category, and $68,000 to Interface Micro Enterprise. Both organizations were funded for micro enterprise development and training, $150,000 to Garden Services for facility modernization that will create jobs, $88,000 to the Center for Hope and Safety for Case Management for victims of domestic violence and sexual violence, $50,000 to congregations helping people for emergency rental assistance to those at risk of homelessness, and $62,000 to the Salem Interfaith Hospitality Network for Homeless Family Case Management. So there is a significant portion of these funds that is going to address homelessness in the community. The projects that are funded in the upcoming year through the Home Investment Partnerships Program, or the Home Funds, are $200,000 to Salem Interfaith Hospitality Network for Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, $174,000 for project delivery to Catholic Community Services Foundation for Affordable Housing Reconstruction, $30,000 to Catholic Community Services for Community Housing Development or Operations, $90,000 to the Salem Housing Authority for Security Deposit Assistance, $148,000 to the Jason Lee Manor for Affordable Senior Housing Rehab, and $300,000 to Mountain West Community Resource Trust for Construction of Affordable Housing Units.
Is that the, sorry?
So that's the list of grant awards this cycle.
The last one to Mountain West, is that the project they're talking about on Portland Road?
Yes, that is the one. So we also have urban renewal funding that are going, that's going into that project.
There's another question before you go on. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you. Are those amounts written somewhere, and I'm just not seeing them?
They...
Are they in that packet?
They're not in the packet. I can forward you copies of the annual plan if you would like to have that.
We have the annual plan in the packet somewhere.
It is in the packet, okay.
It's one of the thick ones there. I think there was two different attachments.
It's the actual numbers.
So that would be in the annual action plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. I didn't see your packet.
That's where the numbers are in.
The numbers are in the, yes, they should be in the annual plan.
Thank you.
So the proposed projects will provide various types of assistance to approximately 2,225 individuals and families within Salem and Kaiser. Those projects assist low-to-moder income citizens with economic, social, and housing needs. Because these are grant awards based on applications we receive, we do not have any grant awards that are going directly to Kaiser organizations. So we have individuals that are residents of Kaiser that will be served through organizations that serve both Salem and Kaiser, but they are not Kaiser organizations. So as we move into updating our five-year consolidated plan, you know, one of the things that we plan on doing is increasing outreach into Kaiser to identify those service providers that may be interested in applying for grants. Another thing that we intend on doing through the updated five-year consolidated plan is trying to build capacity in our service providers so that we can have another, what they're called CHODOs, or Community Housing Development Organizations. There is funding through Community Development Block Grants that can only go to CHODOs. We only have one in the Salem-Kaiser area, so that is an area where we really need to work on building capacity, and that will be a focus of our outreach efforts as well. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the program, the grants, the whole process, any of it.
All right. And just to let everybody know, this is the presentation portion. We won't be taking action until our next meeting, June 19th, when we'll actually, excuse me, be doing the actual renewal. So, but we want to give Kristin the opportunity, and all of us, anybody who looked at the packet tonight, this is a very substantive document, a lot of information in there, and as we learned through the homeless initiative, housing, homelessness, housing support is a complex beast. And this collaboration that we have with Salem allows more dollars to come into our area to be more effectively used for people in the Salem-Kaiser area. So we appreciate the partnership. Questions? Anybody? This is not your last shot at it. We'll have another shot at it in a couple of weeks. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So on, and I don't have a page number, but the City Council, City of Kaiser, State of Oregon Resolution document number. So this is going to be updated, is that what they're doing? They're updating this? This is 17 years old.
Right. That was put in for reference?
Okay. So there will be a new resolution then, once we vote on it?
A new resolution.
Okay, understood.
The resolution, that was for establishing the, the resolution that's in there is one that establishes the collaboration for Salem-Kaiser. Am I correct on that?
Are you talking about the 2013?
No, I think she's talking about the one...
2002.
Right. The 2002 one from way back.
Oh, that, we're going to operate under that same agreement, I believe. It's just, we will just have council direction to renew it for another three years. So we won't, we don't, we won't have a new resolution. It'll just be a council direction to renew. We may have a separate resolution as part of that public hearing packet. I don't, I don't know yet, but it's, we're not replacing the agreement, we're just extending it three years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming tonight, and we appreciate the work that you're doing to get more people into stable and permanent housing.
You're very welcome. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. All right. And anybody, I would encourage folks who want to know more, please go, get into the packet. It's posted online on the city website, and it's embedded in there to read the entire report. We're going to go back to then our regularly scheduled program and get into our public hearings. We're going to start off with item 7A, Oddmo's Pizza Liquor License Application. And so I'm going to open the public hearing on that application. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On May 5th, 2017, the city received an application for a new liquor license for Oddmo's Pizza, which is located at 5151 River Road North in Kaiser. The applicant is Eric Burge. This new application will allow the store to sell alcohol for consumption off premises. As required by Kaiser ordinance, a public hearing was scheduled, notice was published and mailed to all property owners within 200 feet of the proposed establishment. The Kaiser Police Department reports a clear background check on the applicant. In addition, the Community Development Department finds the location of the establishment to be properly zoned and had no additional comments. It is recommended that the public hearing be opened to allow testimony from the applicant or other interested individuals, and upon completion, the hearing be closed. It is further recommended the city council recommend approval of the application for Oddmo's Pizza under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and then that recommendation will be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for their dispensation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the staff report? Mr. Burge, would you like to come on down and talk to us a little bit about Oddmo's and what you're doing with your business expansion? If you have a seat at the table, we have, the microphone is there for the people who are watching online.
Thank you. So I'm Eric Burge. I own the Kaiser franchise location for Oddmo's Pizza. The liquor license is for sale inside the store, but also allowing of delivery of a limited amount of alcohol to residents as well.
So this will be part of the delivery service? When you order pizza, you want some beer to go with it, you can order that too?
Correct. But there has to be a food, there has to be a food order placed for delivery to be able to receive the alcohol. We cannot deliver it without a food order.
Okay. Very good. Counselor Parsons?
What about checking for IDs? How does that work?
So the delivery drivers are required to identify the person at the residence who placed the order to the store. They're not allowed to even take the alcohol out of their vehicle before ID check, and then they have to verify and make a signature on the receipt that they did verify the identification.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Counselor Reed?
Is this fairly standard for other Oddmo's franchises, or is this an innovative move on your part?
It actually, they started it two years ago with the other four locations. So we're just adding on to the franchise. We've realized that it is a, it is a sale generator. It also is nice because you, the idea is to keep people off the streets from having to, maybe they've already had a drink, to go get more alcohol. So it provides us a way to deliver it without having people, put other people in danger.
Follow-up?
Also a follow-up question. You mentioned limits, so what are those specific limits?
The, as far as what we can deliver?
Yes, or what you're willing to?
We can deliver two six-packs to an address per day. Or it's two six-packs or three 22-ounce bottles.
Counselor Herrera, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So a person can just order beer, no pizza?
No, they have to order food. We can't, you can come in the store and purchase it, just like a convenience store, but to get it delivered to your house, you do have to place a food order.
Gotcha, okay.
Counselor President Parsons?
Again, just a follow-up. Are you, are you familiar with the Responsible Vendor Program?
I've been given some stuff through the OLCC, and I've been, I've taken all their, doing their videos in as far as safety and how to train the employees to keep a safe environment for how they're dealing with deliveries.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. All right, any other questions? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming tonight. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this issue? Go ahead, once, twice? I'm going to go ahead then and close the public hearing. Counsel President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for Oddmo's Pizza under the guidelines as established by ORS 271.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and this recommendation shall then be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council approve recommendation for the liquor license for Oddmo's Pizza under the guidelines established, and I'm going to amend ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and that this recommendation be forwarded to the OLCC for final approval. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counsel.
We wish you all the best. That takes us then to item 7B, which is a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues, and a resolution certifying that the City of Kaiser provides four or more municipal services. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm going to go to Mr. Tim Wood for items B through F. Just go directly to him for all of those.
Are we going to do them all at once?
No, one at a time.
Checking, just checking, okay.
We have to open the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, City Council?
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this item, on the first one, which is declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. Okay.
Madam Mayor, City Council, the first item up for the, for tonight, Oregon law requires that cities certify to the state that we provide four or more services in order to receive revenue-sharing funds. Revenue-sharing funds consist of liquor tax, cigarette tax, and gas tax. Marijuana tax is not included in this, so we don't have to certify for that at this point. So we're expecting to receive approximately $325,000 in state revenue sharing during 2017-18. The state also requires us to hold a public hearing, so as we're doing now, my staff recommendation is to hold a public hearing, take any testimony, close the hearing, and then move forward to certify that we do provide four services. And with that, if you have any questions?
All right. Any questions for Mr. Wood? All right. Is there anybody who, here who would like to testify on this? We have nobody signed up. Seeing none. So we do have two resolutions, I believe. Counsel President Parsons, do you want to start with the first one?
Yeah, I'll start with the first one. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017 declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017 declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017 certifying that the City of Kaiser provides four or more municipal services.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017 certifying that the City of Kaiser provides four or more municipal services. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us then to item 7C, Resolution amending the Stormwater Utility Fee, amending R. 2014-2504, and repealing R. 2016-2690. City Manager?
Mr. Wood?
Madam Mayor, City Council, as discussed during the long-range planning meeting in April...
That's right. I have opened the public hearing, thank you. The public hearing is now opened. Mr. Wood?
Don't speak until she does that.
It's a new...
I'll catch on. I have enough tries tonight. So as discussed during the long-range planning meeting and the, in April, and the Budget Committee meetings in April, staff is recommending a 55-cent increase per ESU per month. This increase will bring in an additional $75,000 into the Stormwater Fund. The additional revenues are primary for, primarily for infrastructure and for ongoing compliance requirements for all of the licenses that were required, permits that were required to get. With that, if you have any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Wood on the staff report? Seeing none. Is there anybody here who would like to testify on this issue? I have nobody signed up for the public hearing. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt the Resolution amending the Stormwater Utility Fee, amending Resolution 2014-2504, repealing Resolution 2016-2690.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017 amending the Stormwater Utility Fee, amending Resolution R. 2014-2504, and repealing R. 2016-2690. Discussion. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I think for the record, I would just like, I think it, I think it's important to say, after, you know, reading all of this, there's a lot of information on storm water, but at the same time, I had a great conversation with Tim, who took the time to really explain things to me. I have a really hard time with the fact that right now, we're kind of hitting with a lot of fees to the citizens, and all of the conversations we're financially having, and this is one more. So I was kind of disappointed in the timing, but I do understand it, and I just want to know, want to said for the record that, you know, it is a necessary evil, and I think there's, you know, unfortunately, it's, you know, it's not pretty, but it's really, really important for the future of, you know, our water. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just to kind of capitalize on that a little bit, A, this is federally required, it's not optional. All sorts of bad things happen if you decide you really don't want to do this. They do have the bigger hammer. But more importantly, I want to give kudos to our Public Works Department and our Stormwater Utility, where they've taken this opportunity to turn it into a real benefit for the citizens of Kaiser. We don't have the intersection flooding that we used to have, because the storm drains are now clean. We've had a lot of rain this winter, as anybody who's been here for more than a few minutes would realize, and we haven't had the road closures that we used to have years ago. And that has a large part to do with our storm drains working very, very well. So we have been able to benefit from this, as well as comply with federal requirements. And I really want to give Elizabeth Sagmiller and Bill Lawyer, the entire staff there, a big kudos for making sure that this has a benefit to the people of Kaiser.
Juan and Art.
So...
Juan.
Yeah, and Juan, and...
Art.
Art, yes. Yep, they do a great job. They really do. All right, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 7D, an ordinance setting water rates 2018, repealing ordinance number 2016-756, and I'm going to open the public hearing. I can be trained. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Wood?
Madam Mayor, City Council, consistent with the Stormwater Fund, we discussed the water fund during the long-range planning meeting, and in addition to the Budget Committee meetings in May, staff is recommending a 4% increase in the water rates effective January 1st, 2018. This will bring in an estimated 50... This will bring in an estimated $56,000 in additional revenue during fiscal year 2017-18. The increase is primarily being driven off of the water master plan and our need to continue on with the improvement process, mostly doing our water main replacement projects. And with that, if you have any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Wood? All right, seeing none. Is there anybody here who would like to testify on our water rates? There is nobody signed up for the public hearing. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance setting the water rates 2018, repealing ordinance number 2016-756.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance setting the water rates for 2018, repealing the ordinance number 2016-756. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item 7E, A Resolution Certification of the Lighting District Assessments. City Manager. Oh, public hearing is now open on street lighting districts. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, consistent with last year, we do assess street lighting districts. These are individual districts that are billed on a reimbursement basis. So we incur the cost, and we go and certify through the property tax statements each year on the previous year's actual costs. As discussed during the Budget Committee meeting, the assessments are almost exactly the same as last year. If you look at the dollar amount, this year we've calculated $408,000 compared to $417,000 last year. The decrease is primarily due to a change in the administrative fee. The cost of the city actually administering this has decreased because we've gotten a little more efficient and are spending a little bit less time on it. So you'll see a slight decrease, but not a whole lot. So with that, if you have any questions?
All right, any questions for Mr. Wood? All right, is there anybody here who would like to testify on this issue? I have nobody signed up for the public hearing. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2017 Certification of the Lighting District Assessments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2017 Certification of Lighting District Assessments. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us then to 7F, which is a resolution adopting the fiscal year 1718 budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes. So I'll open the public hearing. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, the Budget Committee convened on May 2nd and on May 4th, and at both instances received public testimony. State law requires us to hold a public hearing in addition tonight to hear any additional public testimony. After you hear the testimony, staff's recommendation is, you have several options. You can approve the budget, you can amend the budget, or you can deny the budget. However, we have to have a budget in place by June 30th, or we will not be able to spend any money into the new year. In addition, as part of this process, we're also required to certify the tax rate, which is $2,828.38 per 1,000 of assessed value. Just as a reminder, we did have a few additions during the Budget Committee process. We had some amendments. Those amendments are now reflected in the document that you have before you. With that, if you have any questions?
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Wood on the staff report? All right, is there anybody here who would like to testify on the Kaiser City budget adoption? I have nobody signed up for the public hearing. Don't all rush it, one? Okay. With that, then I will close the public hearing. Counsel President Parsons.
I'm looking for it, sorry. There's a lot of pages.
It is a few pages. 217.
Okay. Hold on a second, sorry.
It's here. Yeah, it's exactly that.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2017 adopting the fiscal year 1718 budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2017 adopting the fiscal year 1718 budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes. Discussion. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in much research and numbers and looking at the bigger picture, I feel like the budget's excellent. I was a part of the process. I think the Budget Committee did a great job. I agree with 99% of the budget. I am struggling personally with the amount of both indirect and direct that we are sharing with the Chamber of Commerce. And when I total those figures of indirect and direct, we're over $16,000 that we're paying, both in kind and overtime. And I see it as a conflict to pay overtime to the police, to the city's general fund, and yet turn around and ask the citizens that it's time for more money to support our police. So that being said, as you know, I fully support our police and where we need to be with that. But I struggle with how to put it all together. And so my thought isn't an amendment, I'm not requesting amendment, but just food for thought of why, A, I'm a no on this portion of the budget, but also for conversation next year, that we could even have throughout the year with the Chamber. I love what the Chamber does. I love that we're supporting the community and the businesses and bringing people to Kaiser. So I really want to make sure that's emphasized. But I think we have a fiscal responsibility to be accountable to that money and maybe look at maybe changing the line item from general fund to the, from the general fund to the TOT, which currently is $68,000. And I believe next year, if everything goes as planned, we'll be double that at $140,000. And I think that's plenty of money to support our local Chamber and support local businesses and still take care of our police officers. So, Madam Mayor, for that reason, on the no, on the budget, I'll be a no this year.
And you don't have a change that you want to propose this year? You just...
You know, no, I'm, I'm, I just wanted you to know how I feel and what I think about it. And I want to support the Chamber, and I don't want it to come across as not supporting the Chamber. I just think we need to do it differently to be more fiscal responsible.
So, to be continued.
Sure, and a reason of why I'm a no to the budget that we've worked so hard on, so. And I guess I can't, I did speak with Shannon and Tim. I can't just say no for one point of it. I have to say no for the entire budget, is what they explained to me. So again, not complaining or against the budget. It's just the one issue I have with the overtime with our police department and that it falls with the timing of asking our citizens for increased general fund money. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
Motion passes with one no, this is Counsel Ryan. And that concludes then our public hearings for this evening. That will then move us on to Item 8B, A Resolution Certification of Delinquent Sewer Accounts. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, on an annual basis, the city identifies sewer-only type of accounts within our utility billing system that are delinquent. Based of, as of February 28th, 2017, we send a certified letter to the address we have of record and notify them that if they don't pay by May 1st, we will turn that money over to the county and certify it onto their property tax statement. This year, we have $7,139 compared to $5,598 in the past. And with that, if you have any questions?
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Tim on the delinquent sewer assessments? All right, Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2017, the Certification of Delinquent Sewer Accounts.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2017 Certification of Delinquent Sewer Accounts. Discussion. I have one question. You gave the total number of money owed. That strikes me as a very small percentage of our total sewer accounts. Is that correct?
That is correct. There is a very small percentage of sewer-only accounts within the city.
Okay, so these are just sewer-only accounts?
A sewer-only. All the other accounts, we kind of have a built-in hammer that if they don't pay, we turn off their water. And with these accounts, we don't have that option because they don't have water service.
Okay.
They're private wells.
Got you. Or undeveloped property, possibly?
Mostly private wells. Not a lot of undeveloped property.
No, not within our UGB, there certainly isn't much left. All right, any further discussion? Counsel Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for curiosity, has that been going down on the private wells? Is that, was sewer-only, is that? Is there less, and less than there were like, say, 10 years ago?
I would say probably less, but not a lot less. As we get new development in, obviously, some of the old parcels that used to be, used to have their own well, could be abandoning them. But just if someone has a well and it's just their primary residence, it's not a plot of land that they can subdivide. Typically, you don't see them move away from it.
Yeah, scares them out. Thank you.
All right, further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to Item 8C, An Ordinance Repealing Ordinance Number 94-307 Requiring Vehicles For Hire To Be Licensed, Establishing Regulations And Ordinance Number 2016-752, Amending Ordinance Number 94-307, Declaring An Emergency. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Counsel. At a previous meeting, the council directed us to prepare an ordinance repealing the vehicle for hire ordinance. That ordinance for repealing is attached. You may remember, this is the discussion regarding TNCs, transportation network companies like Uber and Lyft. With Salem's new ordinance, the thought was, there's no need maybe to over-regulate and allow Salem to do that. Because we have a separate fee resolution, and that resolution is no longer needed, we also prepared a resolution repealing those fees. So the recommendation is to adopt both the attached ordinance and then following that, adopt the attached resolution repealing the fees. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Johnson? All right, Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance repealing ordinance number 94-307, Requiring Vehicles For Hire To Be Licensed, Establishing Regulations, and Ordinance Number 2016-752, Amending Ordinance Number 94-307, Declaring An Emergency.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt an ordinance 2017 repealing ordinance number 94-307, Requiring Vehicles For Hire To Be Licensed, Establishing Regulations, and Ordinance Number 2016-752, Amending Ordinance Number 94-307, Declaring An Emergency. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, flip the page. We have a secondary resolution then repealing the 2016-2667 Establishing License Fees For Operator Of Vehicle For Hire And Driver Of A Vehicle For Hire. Is there a separate staff report on that? Or is that all together?
The resolution?
Correct.
No, that's, I gave the same staff report.
All right.
So we're just repealing the fees, too.
Okay. Then Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2017 repealing Resolution R 2016-2667 Establishing License Fees For Operator Of Vehicle For Hire And Driver Of A Vehicle For Hire.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2017 repealing Resolution R 2016-2667 Establishing License Fees For Operator Of Vehicle For Hire And Driver Of A Vehicle For Hire. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Item 8D, Kaiser Station Area B Master Plan Amendment. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Brown.
We have been contacted by Mr. Chuck Knackvassil, excuse me, for the, anyway. It was, it's not exactly rolls off the tongue there. Who wants to place a movie theater in Area B. As you may remember, we have entered into a letter of agreement. Intent, LOI, that's right. To move forward with exploring the idea of placing a movie theater in Area B. They have come forward with a proposed site plan that is slightly different than the master plan that was approved. Total number of square footage is the same. However, one is larger than what was shown. Now, the buildings, if you will remember, those of you who did that process, they were conceptual in their intent. We placed a couple of buildings on the site. The design intent was, that they would be away from the residences, that they would be facing the street, that they would create a good street presence. Those design intents are still being met. However, because we do not have a specific process to change a master plan, we are asking the council to initiate the process that we would amend that approval for the previous Area B master plan. So staff is recommending sending this directly to the council for the following reasons. The decision has been developed after lengthy and arduous work, and the changes are minor. The previous Area B site plan was, that was a lot of work. And what is now being proposed is very consistent with the intent that was established then. The council is the one that has the background and the familiarity with the issues regarding the current approval. The decisions and conditions will remain largely intact. We anticipate that there will be a couple of those conditions that we would ask the council to amend. One of the ones in particular is, at the time that Area B was, master plan was established, we did not intend to be the property owner. We intended that would be a developer. We are now acting as the property owner. And as you will remember, the intent is that we will lease that property. So we will still be involved. So there's still a few conditions that would have to be slightly changed. Nothing regarding protecting the neighborhood or any of that will be changed. It's just some of those technical aspects will be changed. The council is the final decision-maker in master plan decisions. The reported changes will not significantly change the overall plan or affect any utility, stormwater, or transportation issues. So for those reasons, we are recommending that you pass a minute motion to direct staff to refer the Area B master plan amendment directly to the city council. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Questions for Mr. Brown? Counsel Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I remember we had some talk about the parking spaces. Has that affected it in any way?
Yeah, that was a big concern. I was particularly concerned about that because we certainly don't want to impact the neighborhoods, because they're certainly not going to be parking on the arterial streets. So the proposal that they have come in with is actually to reduce the number of seats. And so they are able to fully comply with our parking requirements and still meet all of those buffering and spacing requirements. That's what I said.
Okay.
It's a significant reduction, too, and it was relatively recent. I mean, last month or two, maybe, from 800 seats to 500 seats. So, I mean, frankly, staff was concerned how in the world the parking could work with 800 seats. And we weren't really quite sure how they were gonna do it. They actually weren't too far off. But now, I think there won't really be parking concerns at 500 seats.
And their concept is not just to reduce the number of seats, just for the sake of reducing seats, but to make it a more boutique experience sake of reducing seats, but to make it a more boutique experience with sort of larger, reclining leather seats and food served and that kind of stuff. So it's, it's a different format, but, but that's where, that's where they're heading, sort of more like the Cinnabar.
Like the ones they have?
Yeah.
So. It's the seats that make the difference.
Yes.
So.
Very comfortable. It's the experience. Okay, um, yeah, that's a bit of a surprise, but it's good to hear. Okay, any further questions? So, Council President Parsons?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to refer to the Area B master plan amendment directly to the city council. Did I say that? Did I?
I think you did.
Twist my tongue? Okay.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to refer the Area B master plan amendment to, directly to the city council. Was that sufficient, Mr. Johnson? All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right, that takes us to the consent calendar. Council President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have five items on the consent calendar tonight. The first is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with Ross Recreation Equipment Company, Inc. for Kaiser Rapids Park surfacing project. The second one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a contract with Schneider Water Services for removal and abandonment of the Lauterback Well. The third one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to award and enter into an agreement with Knife River Construction Northwest for Asphalt Pathways at Kaiser Rapids Park, 2017. The fourth one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to award and enter into an agreement with Roy Hout Construction LLC for Annual Street Resurfacing Project, 2017. And item E is the approval of the May 8th, 2017 special session minutes.
All right, are there any polls? Seeing none, Council President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar items A through E.
Second. The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to council liaison reports. Councilor Anderson, I'll start with you tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things of note. I, this doesn't, it seems like it's been a while, but I think the, the last thing that I can recall after our last meeting was the Iris Festival and the, all of that happening, so let's, uh, I hope everyone had a good time at that, as well as at the parade, too. Just upcoming meetings, I will be participating in Kaiser Chamber Board Meeting. And final thing I'll note is just, we're still in the midst of concert seasons. Whittaker is having their choir concert tonight and orchestra concert tomorrow night. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Councilor Herrera?
Okay, also kudos to the volunteers that helped with Kaiser Fest. It turned out pretty good. The parade was pretty cool, and we all had a great time. All right, on May 22nd, we had our advisory board meeting with CTEC, which is Career Technical Education Center. How I doing?
Yep, got it.
And, uh, that was very enlightening. There's some exciting stuff happening, and I will say this, you know, they have this, the unmanned flight thing is gonna, it's gonna be huge. Oh, there, I don't know if you guys are into the drone thing, but it's amazing. The farmers are all going to it, anyway. That's pretty exciting. Also, I attended a graduation of a young man who happened to be my grandson. He graduated and has been, uh, will be going in kindergarten next year. He graduated from preschool, so.
Woo-hoo.
It's great, it's a big deal, pretty cool. Uh, Cal Club, I want to thank Chris and also Dorothy over at the Police Department for doing a wonderful job. We brought, you know, it was kind of chaotic because you got fourth and fifth graders for our leadership, Cal Club, and, and a design, this is designed to do like 10 people at a time, and we had probably, what, 45 people? And they, and they pulled it off magnificently, and I really appreciate that. So make sure Dorothy appreciates that. They got to play with the, you know, see all the police stuff and cool cars and all that. But so that was very exciting for them. What we see every day, remember those kids that, they get pumped up when they see that stuff, fire trucks, whatever. Anyway, so that was a big deal for us. On June 3rd, we, uh, we just had our fundraiser, fundraiser, which I was out of town for, and I, I hope I didn't lose my parking spot there. Somebody might have outbid me, I don't know, but we'll see. And the most, probably the most exciting thing that happened last week was a, a local young man that I coached here in Little League, had his opening, first pitch in the professional in, in the big show, and it was so exciting to watch Austin Bibbins-Durick go out there and represent, be the first Kaiser resident, Kaiser McNary kid, and that guy was, it's amazing to see. Bill knows him, and we got to see him pitch, and that was so, very emotional for us to follow him, and we, I've, my wife and I have seen him in AAA and, and Texas, and we, and I'm gonna get to see him again this year in Texas, so that was really exciting, very emotional. Along the lines of that, we went to the OSU game local here at Volcano Stadium, that was pretty good, which was, what, three weeks ago now? Two and a half weeks ago?
I'm glad.
And I got to meet Coach Anderson, which was a very nice guy, football coach, very nice guy, was wearing my duck stuff, and he came up to me, so.
[laughing].
We had a great, I just really appreciate it, he's a really good guy. Also, on, on June 6th, which is tomorrow, I get to meet Coach Taggart over at the Willamette Valley Vineyard with the Willamette Valley Duck Club. Congratulations to McNary Baseball, Softball, and Track, they did an outstanding job. Our baseball is limited by Westland, who went to the finals, and, but that was, and of course, graduation is Friday?
It's Friday.
At 5:00. Let's, uh, get there early, because you know how they shift that around whoever goes. It's a, it's a great, uh, I think there's gonna be two, it's done at 5:00?
Yeah, on the 7:30.
So it's, it's amazing how they do that, get people in and out, it's just amazing. And then, what was the last thing I had? Oh, we also, thank you to Kaiser Little League for, we had a couple of volunteers go and paint the soccer field at Kennedy Elementary, me and my son. And they donated the equipment and stuff, and thank God they remembered me, so they were pretty cool. And I just really appreciate that, and the field's looking great out there, they're doing a good job at tournaments, and it's exciting to see that stuff again, baseball and softball. It was mostly girls there, but, and that's it, sorry.
I love that partnership, that is awesome, and, and thank you, to you and your son, who, he was probably more voluntold than volunteered. Thank you so much. Uh, Council President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a kind of a quiet week. We had personal policy last Thursday, I've had a couple of eclipse meetings, with more coming up. Went to, I went to the McNary Booster Club auction on Saturday night, and it was attended very, very well. My pocketbook is a little lighter.
[laughing].
Uh, but we had a great time, it was, and the weather held out, it was absolutely beautiful, so that was really good. And, you know, we, and, and one of the things they auction off, which, which I thought was wonderful, is you adopt a player, I mean, you, you, you auction off, so they have funds for scholarships for kids who can't otherwise afford to play sports. So that's, that's one of the things they do, and I just think that's just amazing, so that these kids can all play. Coming up, I have Marion County Commissioners Breakfast Thursday morning, we have our police safety special session next Monday, and I have planning commission next Wednesday. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lots of senior things going on in the past several weeks, so we'll get to that in a minute. I guess I first wanted to give a bit of a shout out, shout out to the Kaiser Community Band. They had their concert on May 24th, and it was a fantastic concert. It was very, very enjoyable, very, those guys worked very hard, and it was very impressive. Senior awards were last Tuesday, and McNary this year has had, I, I think, more valedictorians than it ever has. Of course, it's a little dicey because they have to actually get As all through the end of the year, but right now we have four salutatorians and approximately 20 valedictorians.
Whoa.
Which means that they have gotten straight As all the way through, so.
That's amazing.
Really, really impressive, lot of excellent, and then these kids are not taking easy classes. You know, virtually all of them have taken a good battery of AP and honors classes, and just really impressive, and a lot of other students honored for a variety of, variety of things, and just really, really proud of our senior classes here. Excellent. Uh, on June 1st, I went to a coffee shop concert, which was attended, which was put on by the McNary Choir, and this is really, these concerts are able to showcase a lot of the, a lot of them are original compositions, and they're, they're a chance for, for kids to do solo and small group kinds of performances, and just really impressive. We've got such a lot of talent at McNary, and of course, the, the schools that feed into them, Claggett and Whittaker, support that immensely. So Bruce mentioned the Whittaker concerts, I shall do the same for the McNary concerts. We have choir tomorrow, orchestra Wednesday, and band Thursday. And then the senior grad party, the all-night grad party is after graduation, starting at 10:30, and I'm going to be helping with a thing that starts at 1:00, so go figure. So, but anyway, that's what I've got going on.
Yeah. Oh, my goodness, short straw there. And also, I want to give a shout out to Council Reed and the other teachers, support staff, and the parents who have supported our seniors who will be graduating this Friday night. This is a group effort. They work hard, but that doesn't happen without a lot of people coming alongside them to get them ready to launch into the next part of their life, so thank you to you and all of your colleagues.
Thank you.
Councilor Freeman?
Um, I'll just give a shout out for Iris Festival as well, to thank you to all the chamber staff and the board and everyone that lined the parade route. I thought we had a lot more people out this year, which is always really nice to see, and thank you to the Corvette Club that was gracious enough to host all of our counselors. And I was able to fill in for the mayor on Crown the Hound. I was the only judge, which, that's a lot of pressure when you have animals staring at you and people. And I also want to thank the Police Department for having a booth there as well. It was, this year we moved the event to right in front of the Big Tent, so I had never participated in that event, it was great. It was awesome, I think, to have Offer, Offer, whoo, Officer Jefferson and Buster, right? Okay. They're doing some canine demonstrations and really showing the public how our police dogs work, but most importantly, having after the demonstrations, walking around so all the children and the people that were spectators could see the police dog, that he is, you know, just a normal dog when he is not doing his duty, and I think it's just a huge showcase to our police department, so thank you, Chief, and to everyone that was involved in that event. I also did participate in the Personnel Committee meeting last week. And then upcoming this week, we do have the Traffic, Bike Ways, Pedestrian Safety Meeting on Thursday, June 8th, at 6:00 PM, and also the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association does not meet in the summer, so we take June, July, and August off, so we won't resume until September. The Volunteer Coordinating Committee will meet on June 15th. Graduation, again, is on Friday, the 9th, so congratulation to all the graduates out there at McNary and all the other high school graduates. I will be attending the Marion County Commissioners Breakfast on Thursday morning. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, kudos to the Iris Festival, I think it's, it was very well done and very well attended, and I, there were so many great positive things about it, it was really nice to see, and it's really nice to see the police presence that we have. I walked home, they were teasing me, but, you know, I wasn't gonna mess with that at all, and it's nice to see them out there and know that they're, you know, they're part of the community and they care, and, and so that was great. Kaiser United I have coming up. I also, I attended our Kaiser Public Art Committee Meeting. We're really excited to move forward with our story polls, which are out front of the, our civic center here, and they're, they're gonna be beautiful story, history of Kaiser, and they're gonna be really well done, and we've had a team work really hard on that. So that's coming closer and closer to fruition, we're working on the grants for that. And then, I guess, as Madam Mayor said, it takes a village to get our kids through graduation. I know, not only do I have McNary graduation, I know we have a lot of college graduations, and I too am a proud parent of a college graduate here this next week, I think it is, and, and he's headed to Willamette Law, so very excited to, to share that with you, but, and really proud of all of our graduates, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I was gonna say, one less tuition payment, but not so much.
Ah, no. How many jobs can I have? Four or three? I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna add a couple of things. First, I want to say thank you to Council President Parsons, Council Freeman, all of you for just doing whatever needed to be done. I needed to be away for a couple of weeks for family events, and I didn't have to worry about a thing because we're a team that is dedicated to serving the people of Kaiser, and true to form, yeah, got done. So thank you all very much, I really appreciate your willingness when I asked for something to just step up and get it done, so thank you. The Iris Festival, I would say, yes, I agree with all of you. I wasn't here for very much of it because that was also the weekend my daughter got married, so I was otherwise occupied, but the pep parade was fabulous. I want to thank the, the folks from Whittaker Middle School, the, the leadership group, Mr. Pat Curran, got a lot of students involved there, Creekside Veterinary was the sponsor once again. We had a huge turnout, and we are finally getting more diversity in species. Not only were my daughters and our guinea pigs there, but we had another guinea pig, a little girl dressed up as a cat with her pet mice.
Chicken and a tutu.
And a chicken and a tutu, yes. So it was a lot of fun, very creative costumes, people have a great deal of fun with it, but it's a wonderful way also to, you know, warm up the parade route and let people know that our, our animal, family members are important parts of our families as well, and it's, it was just a great time. One of the people who has been a regular in the pep parade this year was a featured entry in the main parade, and that was the, the tank and the dogs who were dressed up as members of the military. They are, she, the, the woman who does that costuming, she is retired, she's a veteran who worked with military dogs, and she wants to make sure that we never forget that the canine military members are so important, not only to their, their partners, their human partners, but also in protecting our troops and serving our country. So I want to thank her for taking the time to be an entry in the main parade, and thank her and all of our military dogs and their handlers for their service. It was a beautiful, beautiful float that she did. Also want to, a couple of other things coming up, oh, the CMAC, the congestion management air quality work that we've been engaged with, the Oregon Transportation Commission and ODOT, the Oregon Department of Transportation. This is for recommending how the dollars are going to be allocated 2019 and going forward. And I want to give a huge shout out to Mike Jaffe of the Mid Willamette Council of Governments. He's the senior transportation planner, and he has done a tremendous amount of work to help define the, the objectives of that program, how we all benefit from them, and how those dollars can be equitably shared among the different metropolitan planning organizations, Salem Kaiser being one of them, and make sure that we get results in reducing a congestion and really impacting the quality of our air. So I want to thank Mike for that work. A consensus was reached on what is being recommended to the Oregon Transportation Commission, and that was very technical, very involved work, and I'm very happy to say that is moving forward to the OTC for their consideration. They will amend it, I am sure, and then bring that recommendation forward. So thank you, Mike. You are a rock star. This Saturday, looks like we're gonna be planting a tree, sir. Representative Bill Post was given a redwood seedling, little tiny thing, it's in a pot on his porch. That thing is not going to stay small, so I asked Bill Lawyer to consult with our arborist about where it would be a proper place to plant that so it would survive and thrive, and a location has been identified in the meadows. So Representative Post would like to get that off of his porch. So we are going to be gathering 9:00 this Saturday to plant that tree. We're not gonna have a big ceremony, but we would invite anybody who would like to come out and be a part of that. It's gonna be a neat addition to that park, and also want to make sure that people understand, you know, this, this is going to probably be there a whole lot longer than I'll be around. It's a great legacy going forward for the community of Kaiser. Did I miss anything, Mr. Lawyer?
None.
All right, 9:00, Meadows Park, be there, we're gonna plant a tree. Also coming up will be opening night, and actually first, the College All-Stars for the Salem Kaiser Volcanoes, or properly named the Kaiser Salem Volcanoes. June 13th will be the College All-Stars, and yours truly will be throwing out that first pitch. I'm working on it this year, no hop to the plate, but we'll see. And then opening night will be on Thursday, June 15th, and they will also be celebrating all of the season ticket holders who have been there through thick and thin, through championship and rebuilding over the last 20 years. I want to thank the Salem Kaiser Volcanoes for being a part of our community for 20 years, and this is one of the longest affiliations between a city and a franchise that you see in Major League Baseball, probably in many sports. They tend to jump around a little bit more, but the Walkers live here, they're part of our community, and the volcanoes are part of our community, so the young member will be arriving- So the young men will be arriving soon, and they will start playing ball on the 13th and be here all summer. So go volcanoes. One other, let's see, I think the rest of this is going to be written communications, so I will then move on to other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council, and members or staff an opportunity to bring new or old items before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just wanted to point out, last week, and John was there also, we were at Rotary Meeting on Thursday, and some of the seniors who had applied for and received scholarships through the Rotary Foundation were there telling sort of their story. And I've got to say, as an older person now, it's really easy to fall, yes, yes, Councilor Anderson, I am. I'm starting to get there. It's really easy to fall into that mindset of, you know, hey, these kids, you know, what are they doing? I'll tell you, these kids are absolutely amazing. So some of them are going off to become brain surgeons, they're going to study chemical engineering at Northwestern University, they're musicians, they're athletes, they're volunteering in the community. They're incredibly, you, sir, your classmates are incredibly impressive. So I was, I'm constantly amazed every time I get to interact with today's youth. So they're blowing me away. So, in with that. Chrissy?
I have nothing to say.
Tim?
I have nothing else to say.
Michelle? Chief?
Two things. I thought I'd say this again. Last Friday, early Saturday morning, a number of cars were broken into, and somebody made a comment on one of the next-door social media sites that those cars that looked empty and clean were passed by. And that's a lesson to remember. Lock your cars and don't leave things visible in them. I tell you, I guess I see enough of these that I don't even leave my lunchbox sitting on the seat to run into Fred Meyer or the post office during the middle of the day. So please don't leave things that entice them. Councilor Parsons mentioned that next Monday, there's a special council meeting at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. And is that going to be televised, Mayor?
I believe so.
I believe so.
It needs to be televised.
Okay. It is to continue the parks and police funding conversation with a special emphasis on police funding. You can get more information from the police department perspective at www.kaiser.org/polic. That's next Monday at 6:00 PM, and we would love to hear from you. Thank you.
One more thing. Blast Camp.
Well, Blast Camp is booked.
Already full.
200 kids, and it was booked the second day.
Wow.
We would love to hold more than one session of Blast Camp. It is a tremendous undertaking. I'm not promising that we will ever be able to hold more than one, but this year, we're filled up 200 kids in two days.
That is fabulous. And I understand that donations would be gratefully accepted to help make this possible?
Yeah, well, we're always, we're always going to make it happen. Donations help us make it happen with a bigger splash. Sure. Thank you.
With a bigger blast.
Bigger blast.
Mr. Lawyer?
Nothing directly related to Kaiser Night, but I just have to give a shout out to the Oregon State Beavers baseball team. Number one ranked in the country, lost four games all year long, headed to the superregional, hoping, hosting the superregional in Corvallis. They win that, they go to the College World Series.
All right.
Mr. Brown?
Go Beavs.
Nothing. That was anticlimactic. Shannon?
Nothing tonight, I think.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Vala, did you have one more?
You know, I just wanted to add on to what Chris said because our liaison for parks, Sam, what was Sam's name?
Elder.
Elder. They had the march for Kennedy, and they came back, and I realized that I, he's a senior just graduated, and I realized that I read to him when he was in kindergarten. So that's kind of cool. And the last thing was, on June 13th, I have the parks meeting, and I'll be a little late, I don't know, because I will be going to the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Committee for the first time, which is with you, John, is that the 13th?
Yeah, that's Tuesday. Of course, the funding meeting is Monday, right?
Yes, the funding meeting is Monday. Yes. You're off the day.
Oh, good. Perfect.
Beast of our parks.
Well, yeah, I was pretty excited. But anyway, I thank you, Chris, for acknowledging the great seniors because they're amazing. They really are. So our mentors at Kennedy were amazing. They were very consistent, and they were always there, and very caring. The kids still talk about them. So those senior classes, amazing thing. Thank you.
There was a picture on Facebook, and I love how the seniors go cap and gown to their elementary schools. And they show the kids, this will be you. And there is so much power spoken into those kids that they can now envision themselves, I'm going to do that, too. Yeah. It's so important to speak that kind of positive affirmation into our kids because there's so much that comes at them that can be negative. And when our seniors, our senior students invest in the kids and the ones coming behind them, way to go. That's how Kaiser rolls. So very, very proud of them. I love seeing those pictures. It gets me every time. Written communications. Normally, I don't have a whole lot. Yeah, there's a few things tonight. But first, I want to lead off with this. This is the Mid Valley History Tour. If you can get that one on the camera. I left a copy for each of you and a couple for Tracy for the record. But this came from the Statesman Journal. They sent us several complimentary copies of the Statesman Journal's recent special edition on a historic tour of the Mid-Valley Amict Valley. This section was included in the subscriber's April 23rd paper. Kaiser is featured on page eight. So she wanted to make sure that we all got copies of this and could enjoy some of the things that celebrate the history and the culture of Kaiser. Also in your mailboxes came the stormwater news. This is also available online, and again, it's part of that public outreach so people can understand our stormwater system and how what goes down those storm drains goes straight to the river, so how we can keep our environment clean. Each one of us making a difference. So this is a great newsletter. I really appreciate the work that's going into that outreach. I also got a letter from the American Cancer Society. The Relay for Life will be occurring at the Shemawa Indian School on Saturday, July 8th. And I've been asked to be one of the speakers to welcome the Relay participants to the event. This is a great event that not only helps inform people about cancer awareness, but also celebrates the work for research, for healthy alternatives for folks as they work through cancer, and to also celebrates the survivors of cancer. So I will be very happy to accept this invitation to be part of the Relay for Life. And this was the volcanoes. We already talked about them. This is a letter that I received. You may remember, a few weeks back, we heard from a couple of teachers from the Salem Kaiser School District regarding an inclusivity resolution. And I want to read a letter that they sent to me. I'm sorry it took me a couple of weeks to get it. I have been out of town with family, so I want to read this into the record because I think it has an action item in it, and that was what I asked them for. Says, "Previously, we came before the city council with the goal to make sure Kaiser is a safe, welcoming, and inclusive city, and for the council to consider creating an inclusivity resolution for Kaiser. We express concerns, and you ask that we think of some actions that could be taken. Thank you for your considerations listening so far and for your support and suggestion in including us in these discussions and actions. At this time, we feel that having an inclusivity resolution is a foundational action we need to take in order to ensure our goal. We could help create a group or task force so that we can work together with you and the city council to create a resolution and further actions that embody inclusivity. The work group or task force could ideally include city council and community members. It would be a diverse membership that reflects Kaiser's population and include representatives from community groups like Mano Amano, the NAACP, CAUSA, the LGBTQI and community education and religious leaders, and members from the Kaiser Police and Fire Departments. We'd collaborate to form a resolution and ongoing future actions related to our goal. We feel an inclusivity resolution is essential for Kaiser for the following reasons. One, to show Kaiser's values of inclusion, equality, and respect for all citizens, all residents that call our city home, and that Kaiser embraces, celebrates, and welcomes all residents of any national origin, race, ethnicity, language, gender identity, sexual preference, marital status, disability, income, citizenship status, or religion, and their contributions to the collective prosperity of all residents. Two, to show Kaiser resolve to fight racism, religious discrimination, sexism, homophobia, and violence, or bullying in our schools and our neighborhoods. Three, it is an uncertain time for many immigrant families, and the treatment of newcomers has ripple effects throughout the immigrant community. Many have been afraid to go to the courthouse, taking their children to school, and going to local government buildings for fear of running into Immigration, Customs Enforcement. To ensure the safety of everyone, we want immigrants to be able to call the police for help without worrying that their families will be broken up, or that reporting a small crime will result in disproportionate punishment. Effective policing requires trust between law enforcement and community members. And I want to give a shout out to Chief Teague, who has been very active in making sure that they're very proactive in this regard. Number four, to understand that chronic discrimination leads to community disengagement, diminished opportunities for integration, increased stigmatization, and negatively impacts local economic activity. Five, many cities in Oregon are working to get resolutions in place or already have one. Passing an inclusivity resolution strengthens the state law by showing that other cities or counties support it. We must unite against attempts to separate or treat any members of our Kaiser communities less than any other member. No matter where we are from, we are all Oregonians, and we all want to be safe and welcome in Kaiser. We who are listed below urge the city council to create a work group or task force to work together with us to create an inclusivity resolution for the city of Kaiser that embraces, celebrates, and welcomes all its residents and their contributions." Thank you. And the people are assigned below. I really appreciate the thought that went into this, and they did what we asked, which was action. And I feel that this is a good time to engage in that kind of conversation about what inclusion looks like, and are there ways in which our community can become more inclusive? I'm thinking in particular of some incidents very recently, as well as some over the last several years, where people have not felt included or have felt targeted. So how do we help people know where their voice is, where they can take action, where they can go? Are we doing a good job in getting that information out there? I know the police have been very proactive in this, and there may be opportunities to expand upon that. So with that, I would like to take this letter under advisement and come back with a proposal for either task force or work group, I'm not sure what yet, that would include a broad diversity of people from our own community and have these kind of conversations, invite the community to be involved. This gets to our council goal of community engagement, and the upshot would be action items for communication, for engagement, and for all members of our community. So that's where I'd like to take this. Any thoughts at this point? Councilor Ferrera?
I, you know, I know that a lot of people think, and they're probably thinking right now, you know, what good is this? But in some, I guess, like for what happened in Portland, and there was an incident that happened personally with my two nephews that went viral, 8 million views. I don't know if you guys heard about it. You probably saw it.
Oh, yeah.
It happened, involved my nephews, and it was on the MAX, the very same MAX, the very same route where the gentleman slashed some throats over here for, just for, and it was the same thing. It was a guy saying things to two, and I've actually witnessed stuff like this. I know that those of you that are not around some of this stuff, you probably think it's overblown, all this, but one is too many. The deaths of those kids up in Portland, it was, it was just, you know, it's very frustrating to me because there's people that don't actually believe that these incidents occur. And I think that when they bring that up, to me, I'm proud to say that I'm Kaiserite for 40 years, and I want Kaiser to be proud of everybody who comes here, regardless of what. You know, and I understand the older generations look at things differently, but, you know, I'm an older generation, and I happen to look at things that are real, you know, because the world's changing, and we have to protect our citizens because I do believe it causes disengagement if we don't. There's a lot of people that mock diversity and have, you know, and think it's kind of funny, but for those of us that have experienced it, we think it's very real. So I would like to pursue and help in any way I can because it happens right here, you know? So thank you very much.
Thank you. It does happen more often than we think, and sometimes people just kind of go along to get along. That's not okay. That is not okay. When there's an opportunity to make a real difference or give a person a voice who doesn't have a voice, make a real difference. Now, this is, there are some people that capitalize on opportunities, perhaps, but I think they're, by and large, the vast majority, just kind of go along to get along. And if we can make our community stronger, help young people, help new people to our community, help those of us who are part of the Silver Tsunami, be able to, you know, have a stronger voice in our community. Being here for 40, 50 years doesn't make you immune to discriminatory or ugly behavior from neighbors. And being new doesn't make you immune either. But if we can make Kaiser a better community by having an open conversation and discovering things maybe about ourselves that we don't know, I don't, I think we'll end up better for it. So that would be my intent. And I'll bring back something that we can discuss on what that will look like going forward. Your input would be very much appreciated, but a draft will be put out to you for comment, and we'll be able to have that discussion in open session. And go from there. So, and I will make sure that Tracy, the writer of this letter, will be invited to come to that council meeting in particular so they can be part of the conversation. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I don't know, maybe a week and a half ago, possibly two weeks ago, I sent out to all the city councilors a draft of the city council goal work plans. If you haven't read them, please, please do take a look through them, give me comments. But one of them, the outreach goal does include contemplating an inclusivity resolution as part of it. So just want to point that out. But if you haven't taken a look at those, please do, and provide feedback so I can, like, firm those up and get them out to you. Thanks.
That'd be great for everybody to get that done. And I believe also some evaluations are due, and some of us have been gone. So we need those ASAP, as soon as possible, please. The evaluations to turn in to, Michelle. I think Survey Monkey is the link. If you have any issues getting onto that, please see Michelle, and she'll help you get that done. All right. Well, that's true. Councilor Ferrera? So, I know for the 22nd, we talked about, you're not going to be here, so we can do one of two things. We can move forward, or we can reschedule. So.
Whatever you guys determine is best.
We'll have that conversation offline then. All right. I don't want to put you on the spot. Too late. Agenda input. We will be having our special session of the city council, a public forum on the Kaiser Police Public Safety Fee. That will be next Monday, June 12th, right here at 6:00. Come on down, and there's information online with the information on what that fee is proposing. On June 19th, 2017, 7:00, city council in regular session. July 3rd, 2017, 7:00, city council in regular session. I'm leaving this on. The intent is to cancel if we can, but if there is something that absolutely has to be dealt with, we will handle it that night. Councilor Anderson?
Madam Mayor, I can tell you, I for sure will not be at that meeting.
Okay.
If it is, if it does happen.
All right.
Did you see the July 3rd?
July 3rd, yeah. That's two.
If we get two more, and then we'll just go ahead and cancel.
That'll just be right there, quorum.
Got to go somewhere.
I know. Some of us have to work that day. And then July 10th, city council work session, 5:45. Do we have a topic for that, the work session on July 10th?
No.
Not this time. All right. We'll leave that on there. Again, if something comes up, otherwise, it will be canceled. We should know by our June 19th meeting. All right. That takes us to the end of the agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the order? And we are adjourned. It is 8:30.